Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the Chamber of Government of Carlsville, Georgia. Once again, we lean and depend on you for guidance, direction, wisdom, and clarity. We ask you to be with us during the meeting and help us make the right things and the right decisions for the city. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ray, the roll, please.
Carrie Hides, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taft Ren, Ward 6.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of council meeting minutes from our June 2nd meeting. And council, you've had an opportunity to look these over and make any or note any changes. Now would be the time to point those out, and if there are none, then a motion to approve those minutes would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mayor. The Edward Area Housing Authority, one of the members' terms expired, and she would miss miss like to continue on through April 1, 2027, and it's recommended for your approval.
Thank you very much. Do you have that person's name?
Ms. Hetty Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And those, that appointment is approved unanimously. Tom, go ahead and get us started off with the budget ordinance for 2223.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of the fiscal year 2023 budget. The proposed budget is a balanced budget. It increased $222,065 over the last fiscal year's budget. The increase equates to about a 13.98% increase. The proposed budget includes salary adjustments, a slight increase in city's property tax mileage rate, increases in health insurance for both city employees in the city, and increase in the water and sewer rates, electric rates, and solid waste, solid waste rates. There have been no changes since the first reading, and I recommend approval of the fiscal 2023 budget as presented.
And like I did the first reading, I will point out that your reference to a slight mileage rate increase is not an increase in the mileage rate. It is a, it is the not rolling back to where we were the previous year. We're a growing city. We have historically taken that growth that we need to reinvest into the city. So we have to call it an increase, even though the state can do it at 6% and not call it a tax increase.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, this has been a long process for department heads, and Tom, I appreciate all the help in this, you know, to get us to this point. I do recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If there's not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Tom, if you'll please take up the utilities ordinance regarding solid waste rates.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is also the second reading of this ordinance. This is a proposed fiscal year 2023 budget includes an increase in the solid waste fund to help address the maintenance and capital needs of the solid waste fund. The increase is as follows: a $2.50 increase per month for residential solid waste customers, and a 10% increase per month in the commercial solid waste customers. Also, residential customers will no longer be required to purchase solid waste cars as the city will provide those. This is to be, to go in effect July 1, 2022. No changes since the first reading, and I recommend approval of the proposed solid rate. Solid waste rate increases as read.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion on this item? If there is not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. If you'll please handle the ordinance regarding water and sewer rates.
Honorable Mayor and Council, again, this is the second reading of this ordinance. This, again, is for the water and sewer rate increase. The fiscal year 2023 budget includes an increase in the water and sewer rate to help address the maintenance and capital needs of the water fund. The increase is as follows: a 2.5% increase in residential, commercial, and industrial water and sewer rates for both inside and outside of the city limit customers. The 2.5% increase will allow the Water Department to continue the maintenance of the existing water lines and sewer lines, as well as update and expand the system to fulfill future needs. The amendment ordinance also adds a new wholesale rate class for customers, which currently only includes Bartra County Water System as a customer. The wholesale and industrial classes are currently set at the same rate. There was one change to the prior ordinance. The wholesale rate conversion from CCF to 1,000 gallons was miscalculated. The new calculation has been included in your package tonight and is in the ordinance that I am presenting tonight. The, I recommend the approval of the proposed water and sewer rate increase to begin July 1, 2022.
And if you can give me a rough dollar amount on what the average residential customer sees additionally?
Yes, sir. I left, I left that out, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Residential customers will increase about $1.10 per 7,000 gallons consumed.
Thank you. All right. Any questions of Tom on this item? If there are no questions or discussion, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The utilities ordinance regarding electric rates, please, Tom.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, again, this is the second reading of this ordinance. This is for the ordinance regarding electric rate increases. The proposed budget includes an increase to the electric rates. The Electric Department is proposing a rate increase based on the state, I'm sorry, on the rate study provided by Electric Cities of Georgia. This is due to operations of the Electric Department increasing, and the increased cost of Plant Vogel units 3 and 4, which will soon be coming online. The proposed increases are necessary to sustain the Electric Department's expenditures. Along with the increases mentioned above, the cost of, Electric Department's cost of electricity generation, which is through coal and natural gas, have also increased. The proposed change includes, includes an increase in the base rate of all rate classes. All changes will occur in the actual rates of each rate class. With the proposed changes to the electric rates, the estimated increase to a residential user will be about $8 a month for 1,000 kilowatt hours used. Carsville resident uses about 1,013 kilowatt hours per month. I recommend approval of this proposed electric rate change to begin July 1, 2022.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? If there's no discussion or any questions, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Menino, you have the next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to the development regs in relation to model home permits. We have three criteria right now, and working with the building officially is recommended we eliminate the requirement for final plating before all the final utilities can be hooked up. It's creating some practical difficulties for operations, so with that, we do recommend approval of this text amendment. Again, this is a first reading.
Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading, and then Randy and his department and all the departments said do a plan reprocess. As Randy mentioned, has looked at this, is something that came out through the process when we were looking at Jackson Farm, but through the model homes, so this would be recommended for your approval at the next meeting.
Well, I know we don't vote, but thank you to you and all the department heads for scanning and reviewing and trying to make things easier where we can do that for people that are going about developing. Any questions or discussion on this first reading? Thank you, sir.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is out-of-date ordinance. As I've talked to Chief McCain on this, on, we'd like to have, remove this item from the agenda because we need to take further review of it and before may bring it back to the City Council at a later date.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor. Next item is the Downtown Development Authority at the city's behest has polled the community to determine whether they wish to continue the Business Improvement District downtown. A petition related to that has been submitted by the Downtown Development Authority to the city of Carlsville. Y'all are approving a resolution to accept the petition and then to direct staff to review the petition for compliance with all applicable laws and to give you a written report back. And then afterwards, you will have a public hearing to receive public comment, and then after the public hearing, you will have two readings on this as an ordinance to adopt, if you so desire, based upon that. You are not approving the bid tonight. All you're doing is accepting the petition.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? If there's not, a motion is in order.
Motion to accept the petition.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Before we start, there are three items that we'll add to the agenda this evening. I'll entertain a motion to add those three items.
How much?
Four. Excuse me, four items. Thank you for that.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Four items added. Thank you for that. And so, Mr. Dixon, if you'll get us started out with your pipe purchase.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The gas system is requesting the purchase of 3,500 feet of 4-inch steel pipe. This pipe is being installed as part of the development agreement for the Great Valley Commerce Center development that was previously approved by council. Bids were requested from three vendors, and only one bid was submitted by Consolidated Pipe of Lawrenceville, Georgia, at a price of $58,800. This is not a budgeted item, but it's fully reimbursable, and council's approval of this bid is recommended.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Gas meters.
Yes, sir. The gas system is requesting the purchase of 40 census-size 880 gas meters to replenish our current stock. Equipment Controls Company of Norcross, Georgia, is the sole source provider of this equipment, and they provided a quote of $41,525.20. These meters are fully compatible with our new AMI system and can be delivered immediately. This is a budgeted item, and council's approval is recommended.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Carter, you've got the next one, please. Actually, you've got the next two.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I first bring before you tonight approval for a budgeted item of this specifically for our training division. This is our records management software, annual maintenance fee agreement. This is with Vector Solutions. You've known it in the past as Target Solutions, but this is a training aid that we use. It's also how we maintain our certifications for ISO and Georgia Fire Fund Standing Training Council. It is a budgeted item, annual price of $7,591.50. Respectfully request your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. One of those added items was for some hazardous material equipment.
Yes, sir. Yesterday, we had a structure fire in one of our local industries, and we decided at that point in time that we also activated the joint hazmat team due to some of the components and the potential hazards that may happen within that fire. This is to replace some of the equipment that was actually damaged during that firefight. We will be activating our Carlsville ordinance in Chapter 919 that allows us to do reimbursement under hazardous materials, and also the Code of Federal Regulations 40 and 49. The total cost for the equipment that is damaged is $10,690.64, but that does not include shipping and handling. So I am asking for an amount up to and not to exceed $12,000 to replace this equipment. This is not a budgeted item, but this will be reimbursed by that local industry upon invoice, and they are aware of this.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Forsyth, you're up.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item is the rebuild and rehab of the Main Street Booster Pump Station. This is for our high-pressure water pump station on Main Street. We pre-qualified contractors for this project, and only two bidders submitted a bid, with the low bid being $2,772,129 from Heavy Constructors of Marietta, Georgia. We recommend in your approval for this project. It is a budgeted item to be paid out of capacity fee funds.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Sidney on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Field loader equipment.
Yes, sir. This is, yes. This is a replacement unit for a 1994 Caterpillar loader. It has about 6,000 usable hours used on it. It's been giving a lot of problems lately. We've spent about $10,000 repairing it over the last three to four months and still have not repaired all the issues with it. We requested an open bids. We're recommending the best bid from Flint Equipment for $193,327. They are the best bid due to their delivery time of 10 days versus 20 and 26 weeks from other bidders.
Okay. Your recommendation is for the best bid based on the?
Delivery day.
Delivery time.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to accept the best bid from Flint Equipment. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. And you had an item that was added, too. Sidney, if you'll please handle that one.
Yes, sir. This is for the purchase of 192 3/4-inch water meters. These are compatible with our AMI system. We cannot get them from our, the current supplier of AMI meters for another four to six months. This is from the other supplier in the state. We're requesting your approval to purchase one pallet of 192 meters for $23,961.60 from Kendall Supply Company.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. Mr. Greer, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for the make-ready fee required by Georgia Power for us to permit our fiber attachments to GPC on poles south of Monroe Crossing, down 41 to Emerson Police Department City Hall. This is not a budgeted item. It's budgeted in the next budget, but it's not in the current budget, but funds are available, and the total is $19,555, and we recommend this for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Stephen.
Next item is for the purchase of office furniture for the new FiberCom office on South Tennessee Street. Total price is $25,599.95 from Office Furniture Expo. Again, not a budgeted item, but funds are available, and I recommend this for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a request to purchase a combination of cooling fans for the garage areas in unconditioned space. This will help increase the airflow and also remove the exhaust fumes from the building. So we request an approval for this tonight.
What does it cost to install?
It's 30, excuse me, $35,231.25.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, you've got the next couple?
Yes, Mayor. The HBAC, one of the units at Bartra County Library, has gone out. They actually received a quote from their company that handles the system, but we, Freddie got with Public Works and got quotes over there with a much better pricing. Recommendation is to go with the lowest bid from Mike Jones, J2AC, at $9,132. They were asking the city to contribute to this. This is based on, subject to the library getting a grant and the match, the 50% match, so our portion would be just over $4,500 for that. This was not a budgeted item. The grant goes in effect in July 1. I am recommending approval. We will find the money within next year's budget to cover that if the council approves this purchase.
And just for people who don't know, that's, the library is owned, that building is owned by the city.
That is correct. As a city, yes.
All right. Any discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously.
Next item is the first quarter 2022 Motorola radio invoice from Bartra County. It's for our 911 radio system that we use with Bartra County, the public safety use, as well as several utility departments. Cost in this quarter is $38,259.81. Recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Why don't you go ahead and handle that added item that you were going to take on with our workers' comp renewal?
Yes, sir. Received the renewal for our property casualty and workers' comp insurance premium. We're with Travelers and Liberty Mutual. Terry Watkins is here if you have any particular questions, but renewal came in at 12% increase. We're still waiting on the cyber liability policy. Hopefully get that information tomorrow, but I'll have to bring that forward to you at the next council meeting. A renewal on this, our policy runs, expires in June 30, and the workers' comp, excess workers' comp, we're self-insured up to $600,000. We do have reserve built up to cover any losses, but that renewal for the workers' comp is $90,953, and the renewal for all the property casualty and auto, other than the cyber, is $1,038,855, and this is within our budgeted. I had about 15% rate increase and came in at 12 at this point in time for next year's budget.
All right. Fingers crossed. Any questions for Dan on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hampton, you are in the spotlight.
Everywhere is spotlight out there today. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is for an invoice for M&amp;R Services. They are a contractor that we use annually to test out a sample of our metering installations to make sure we're billing everybody correctly, make sure the multipliers are correct, everything's wired up correctly and safely, and find any wire that may be damaged in the field and things of that nature. The amount for the invoice was $7,616, and this was a budgeted expense. We do recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Derek.
Yes, sir. The next item was requesting the purchase of a 150 KVA pad-mounted three-phase transformer. This is to replace a stock unit that we've used the last unit. The quote that, we got four quotes, we went out for, for bids. The one that we are recommending was the quote from Solomon Transformer. We considered this one to be the best bid, even though not the cheapest, because of the delivery time being eight to nine weeks instead of 40 weeks, and we do not currently have one on the, on the yard, and it came with a three-year warranty instead of a one-year warranty. We've had really good luck with Solomon Transformers. We've only been using them maybe two years or so, and we haven't had any issues out of them yet. They've been really good to work with.
Great. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the best bid from Solomon. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. And you've got one more, Derek, please.
Yes, sir. 77 Quail Run. This is our standard interconnection agreement. When any time someone wants to add any type of generation, including solar, they are required to fulfill the requirements of this agreement to make sure they don't backfeed on our system and cause problems and things of that nature. And also to make sure there's no safety issues that are generated when they, when they put this online, didn't backfeed, anything like that. And it's basically, you sign a bunch of them, so it's nothing new to it. It's 77 Quail Run. We have checked the system, made sure it operates like it's supposed to, and we do recommend your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Pabst, you're up. No pressure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have renewal contracts for our program providers with Parks and Recreation Department. Those providers with their program offerings are as follows: Carsville Little League doing youth baseball, Southern Soccer Academy with youth soccer camps, Top Shelf Concessions, who's our concessions provider, Wire-to-Wire Running, which does running clubs, camps, and races, and Legion Lacrosse that does youth lacrosse in camps. These existing program providers will continue to give the city 20% to 25% of their gross revenue, including all of the non-resident fees. Top Shelf Concessions will give the city 15% of their gross revenue monthly.
Thank you. Questions for Eric on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Time for the Tom Reinhardt Show. Again.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I am bringing tonight before you the contracts for performing services for those agencies that are awarded funds each year as part of the annual budget. The following agencies and the amounts are included in the fiscal year 2023 budget. Carsville Bartra County Library, $469,500. Cultural Arts Alliance, $41,000. Juvenile Court, $15,000. Bartra Health Access, $2,000. Good Neighbor Home and Shelter, $2,000. Eddie Lee Wilkins Youth Association, $18,000. Bartra, Bartra-Carsville Joint Development Authority, $200,000. Downtown Development Authority, $220,000. Again, all these, all these contracts are budgeted in the fiscal 2023 budget, and I recommend your approval for these contracts.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, then a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve the contract as stated.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. The April 22 finance report.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the April 2020, 2022 budget, I'm sorry, financial report and comparing it to the April 2021 budget, financial report. And the general fund, revenues increased over last year by $2.6 million. Revenue, I'm sorry, let me back up. Revenues include increased by $2.6 million over last year. Expenses increased by $3.2 million. Two areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis are the local option, sales tax, we have an increase there of about $945,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there over last year by about $421,000. And the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last year by $2.4 million. Expenses decreased by $9.5 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $10.3 million. Expenses increased by $8.4 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased in transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $4.5 million. Expenses increased by $3.3 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last April by $7,000. Expenses decreased by $290,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last April by $365,000. Expenses increased by $251,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last April by $112,000. Expenses increased by $181,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased capital expenses, and decreased transfers to the general fund. The cash position for the month of April, total unrestricted cash increased slightly. Total restricted cash decreased. The SPOS balances, SPOS 2003 account, $60,313.70. SPOS 2014 account, $231,991.10. SPOS 2020 account, $5,407,768.81.
Got a question about the building permits and inspection fees. That's kind of spiked. I don't recall it being that much higher last month. Is there a certain project or something that?
I don't.
I know Randy just, I know I should have asked Randy.
I do know that there was a lot going on and I believe we had a kind of a large spike toward the beginning of the fiscal year. I can go back and double-check that.
Okay.
I don't recall, I think this year it increased about $70,000 over last year.
Yeah, we, obviously, the apartment complex by Savoy was early on in the fiscal year. It's going on. And then you have other building permits. I'm trying to think if there's another one that's.
Jackson Farm.
Jackson Farm. You're starting to get some permits.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on the financial report? Mr. Porter, any comments on that?
Just, Mr. Mayor, we're 10 months into the fiscal year. Obviously, with the general fund, we're doing much better than anticipated. Sales tax, boycotts, sales tax are up, but also just trying to stay abreast of rate changes and costs for us throughout the city organization as kind of alluded to with the different purchases the departments have made. We're trying to stay ahead of that curve because things are costing more for us and we're trying to be efficient as possible with the public money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And then, Mr. Lovell, there was one other added item that we need to address this evening.
Yes, Mayor.